Good evening and welcome to the Gwinnett School Board District 5 Candidate Forum hosted by Gwinnett Stop and the League of Women Voters of Gwinnett. My name is Stephanie Wright and I am the co-president of the League of Women Voters of Gwinnett along with Diane Fisher. Marlin Tillman is the executive director of Gwinnett Stop. We are so pleased to have you here this evening on Zoom and hopefully on Facebook. The candidates Louise Radloff incumbent and Dr. Therese Johnson challenger will each be asked the same questions. There are time limits on the questions that range from one to three minutes. Before we get started, just some quick housekeeping and a word about the sponsoring organizations. And then the candidates will have two minutes each for opening remarks. So housekeeping, people are watching on the Zoom webinar and they were going to be on Facebook Live. I'm not sure about that now. Since this is in webinar format, you will only be able to see and hear the panelists. We will be actively monitoring the Zoom chat box and if possible, Facebook Live for comments for questions. Please become familiar with the Zoom controls. The chat window is on the right. Everyone is muted except for the panelists. This session is being recorded and will be available on the Gwinnett Stop and League of Women Voters of Gwinnett Facebook pages. Please share freely with those you think would benefit from this information. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan political organization. We envision a democracy where every person has the desire, the right, the knowledge, and the confidence to participate. Since 1920, the League has been committed to engaging all citizens in the decisions that impact their lives. Formed from the movement that secured the right to vote for women, the centerpiece of the League's efforts remain to expand participation and give a voice to all Americans by engaging in both broad educational efforts as well as advocacy. There are some important upcoming election dates. You need to know that the primary election is Tuesday, June 9th. Registration for the election ended this Monday, May 11th, but you can still register to vote the November election here at govotegeorgia.org. That's G-O-V-O-T-E-G-A dot org. The runoff election will be held August 11th for any race where one candidate does not win more than 50% of the vote. Further, if you have questions about your ballot or need to know what the status is of your absentee ballot and so on, please visit the Georgia My Voter page, And one quick note about the Board of Education Voting Districts. Gwinnett County Public Schools has a map of electoral districts which we link to in the Facebook event comments. For the GCPS website, an individual's residence, not the school attended, is used to determine which school board member represents a particular resident. Please review the 2019-2020 GCPS schools by board district for more information. And that's a link that's also in the invitation, the event. Okay, Marlin?
Good evening. My name is Marlin Tillman. I'm the executive director and co-founder of the Gwinnett Parent Coalition to dismantle the School to Prison Pipeline, or Gwinnett Stop for short. We are a grassroots parent and youth organizing group that works to dismantle the School to Prison Pipeline in Gwinnett County, Georgia. And the School to Prison Pipeline is a national trend wherein children are funneled out of the right public school system and into juvenile and criminal justice system. It primarily impacts students of color, students with a disability, students from low wealth background, and males. If you are in every one of those categories, you're at the highest risk of being in the School to Prison Pipeline. We accomplish our work at the local, state, and national level. Our work fits into two buckets. Public education and awareness and policy change advocacy, pushing for and against policies that impact the School to Prison Pipeline. In our public education bucket, we run a parent leadership institute and a youth leadership institute where we grow advocates and train parents on how to access services and support for their students. We run workshops, understanding the student code of conduct, learning about interventions available if your child is facing challenges. We do workshops designed to help parents and community members understand the feeders into the School to Prison Pipeline and how to change it. We also offer training about the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA, to empower parents to leverage the family engagement components of the law in order to better advocate for their student. And in our policy bucket, we do our work again at all three levels, local, state, national, and with some national partners help us facilitate that. When the policy changed, we were able to get the elimination of a contact quota for the SROs. And we were successful in reducing the number of disparities, disciplinary infractions that could garner police interaction by 33%. Next stuff. Some coming advocacy opportunities and just opportunities to learn and grow. We host a monthly community meeting, the second Monday each month, which is now online like everything else in our lives now. We're collecting feedback for the student code of conduct review that's going on. I personally sit on the committee that is reviewing that code. And I'll post a link in the chat box for ideas. We'd love to have your feedback on what you think should change within the code. And in July and August, we'll host two online meetings about ESSA and you. And then, please save the date for our next candidate forums with the League of Women Voters for districts one and three in September, as well as our annual Dignity in Schools National Week of Action that happens in October 20th. And this is how you can reach us. So please connect with us, email, sometimes Twitter, Facebook, and sometimes Instagram. But we love to engage with you and help you get the best outcomes for your student. Thank you.
Okay, and we will now hear the opening remarks. Let me introduce Mrs. Louise Radloff, who served as a Gwinnett County School Board member for more than 40 years, most recently as chair. And Dr. Therese Johnson challenger for the school board position, has a doctorate in education, and owns a consulting business called Global Purchase Approach. Thank you so much for coming here tonight, ladies. We'll start with Ms. Radloff. You have two minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you very much. Good evening. I'd like to start out by thanking the League of Women Voters and also Gwinnett Stop for hosting this forum. My name is Louise Radloff and I do currently represent all or part of the Meadow Creek, Berkmar, Norcross, and Duluth communities. The most important role the school board has to play is hiring the superintendent. The developing of the relationship, the integrity among the board, is critical to a successful school district. I would like to also share the successes and the challenges during this forum and hope that I'll have the opportunity to do that. I have known Ms. Tillman for quite a while. I have listened and shared some of her thoughts. And I was an original member way, way, way back to the League of Women Voters. So thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for hosting this, if there's gentlemen here. And have a great morning.
Thank you, Ms. Radloff. Now, Dr. Johnson, if you might, you have two minutes for your opening remarks.
Thank you so much for the Gwinnett Stop and League of Women Voters. This is an honor to be able to participate in this forum and talk about my platform, my vision, and to share with people the reason why I am running for a school board. So I am originally from Houston, Texas. I'm a product of public school education. I relocated, I lived in Puerto Rico for college. I also lived in New York City. I relocated here to Atlanta, Georgia. And, you know, education has been something that I'm very, very passionate about. I have a doctorate degree in educational leadership and management. I have also worked over 20 years in diversity, inclusion, and equity work. And I'm also an activist and advocate for, in particular, for Black and Brown communities and ending the School to Prison Pipeline. So this forum is very special and very important to me. And again, I'm honored to represent, you know, the work, the work that I do in our community here in District 5. And I just really want to, you know, focus on making sure that every child has what they need, regardless of where they live, regardless of the zip code, but really make sure that every child has the resources they need to be successful and the teachers are supported and that our community has a voice. Our students, our teachers, our parents, our business partners, that everyone has a voice in improving our school system. So that's pretty much it for my introduction. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Okay, so the first question is just one minute. And we will start with Ms. Radloff. The question is, given all the COVID and everything that's been going on lately, should Gwinnett schools require widespread Corona testing for staff, students, and families before schools reopen?
This is a question that I've been having with Dr. Arona and with the superintendent and board members, which will be next Thursday, our board meeting. I think that's a very, very critical question because in light of what Dr. Fassi is saying, what potentially could be on the horizon in the fall and the winter, that's something we need to discuss as far as mandating it, or I think that's a discussion that we need to have with people like the CDC and, as I say, Dr. Arona. It is a very serious issue and I know it's being encouraged for all to be tested. My concern along those lines, over and above the testing, it's what potentially could be on the horizon with youngsters when they refer to the Kawasaki and the possibility of the virus impacting there. So is it just children? Is it teachers? Is it educators? It's something we need to bring together and talk about.
Thank you, Ms. Radloff. Okay, Dr. Johnson, same question. Should Gwinnett County schools require widespread Corona tests for staff, students, and families before schools reopen?
I absolutely believe that the safety and healthy of our students and our administration and staff, it's, you know, they are important. And ensuring that all of our students and teachers are tested and educated also around how to ensure and maintain the safety of our classrooms, hand washing, and making sure our facilities are disinfected properly and continuously just creating a different routine, right? I don't think we will have school as normal. It won't be the same. I think routines will be changed and I think there will be more focus on, and there should be more focus on disinfecting more and making sure that people are washing their hands more and also ensuring testing. So I completely believe that the safety and health of our community is first and foremost. And if people aren't tested and we shouldn't put our school and our people at risk if they aren't tested.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Okay, next question, and you have two minutes to answer this question. We'll start with Dr. Johnson this time. The Georgia Department of Education determined that the top 10% of students are eligible for gifted education. Gifted education sets the foundation for higher level learning opportunities later. In this heavily Hispanic district, the gifted population in elementary schools is well below 5% of the population. How can Gwinnett County Public Schools do a better job of identifying gifted children in this district?
Thank you, that's a great question. I think the first thing we have to do is we have to educate our parents about the opportunities to better support their children. And sometimes that could include making sure that our communications are in the language that the parents speak and we provide them with the same information that English speakers have to prepare them with the information they need to make sure their children can be eligible for the gifted programming. The other thing is that I think our curriculum has an opportunity to be expanded in a way that it does include a representation of all people, including Hispanic, Latinx people. And when we have that representation, that's an important piece of really attracting and engaging in the interest of a Latinx community. When they see themselves and when they see themselves in a positive light, then they will embrace the education that is presented before them and they will succeed. When it's constantly one particular demographic, it is harder to engage that community. So I think representation, number one. I think number two is making sure we communicate effectively with their parents, providing them with information and access to the opportunities and how they can get their children to be competitive and eligible for the program.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. Okay, Ms. Radloff, same question.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to read the question again?
I think I'm fine, thank you. I think that regardless of where the child comes from or the language they speak, there are talented and gifted children. There's no question about that. There is a testing procedure that goes through to identify these kids. I will say that much of it does go back to the parents that are coming from second language countries, have not had the opportunity to experience that. I think by having gifted teachers, by I think having the local school counselors, the social workers identifying these children, bringing in the teachers and the parents and the social workers to sit down in whatever language they speak and share that their child has the talent to perform at a higher level. I think going back to birth, we've got to encourage our parents constantly to communicate and interact with children. And also, when you look at third grade testing, it's very clear that a lot of our children are missing some of the attributes and that you would expect them to have. But going back to initially, when the child is enrolled, if we can get our parents and other agencies to interact, to talk to the children, to identify the children. Our children are talented regardless of where they come from. But the gifted program is a very, very well-run program. And I think that many more children, if you look at Meadow Creek, Berkmar, GMST, our children from all across the world are very talented and they're valedictorians and salutatorians. They're coming out with AP courses and they're being very successful.
Thank you. Okay, next question, and we'll start with you, Ms. Radloff. Likewise, Gwinnett County Public Schools has a history of segregating children with special needs that has been found to be discriminatory. How do you plan to ensure that children with special needs have the supports they need to be successful? And I'm sorry, I didn't say before, you have three minutes to answer.
I guess you have to identify what the IEP is. I'm very involved with Oakland Center Facility for profoundly medically fragile children. We also have classes, whether it's hearing impaired, visually impaired, autistic, regardless of what the IEP is. There's a one to four ratio. There's a mainstreaming for lunch and arts and things like this. I think every child, regardless of the special needs of that child or what that child needs to have within that classroom, ought to be socially involved with other children and ought to be, whether it be on the playground or in the classroom. I think that our staff does an excellent job in meeting the needs of these children. There are some children that are more severe. And they do have independent nurses and also bus riders and people who ride the bus with these children. It all goes back to the IEP. But I want that child, or any child, to be in the least restrictive setting so that they can be socially, emotionally, and educationally challenged. And our kids do very, very well. Do we have some challenges? Absolutely. Again, it goes back to the IEP and the involvement of the school. Children with visually and musically challenged, it's interesting. There's a young man out of the Norcross area who just this past year was born blind. And now I have him at Parkview High School, well, when the school was open, teaching the blind children music. And he's done a great job. And I think this is a challenge that we need to meet with all special ed kids, no matter where we go.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Dr. Johnson, same question. Did you hear the question for, do you need again?
You don't have to repeat it. I think it's very important for us to really make sure we listen. Make sure we listen to our parents. Make sure we listen to the people who are involved in our IEP, the counselors, and the students, if possible, depending on how they communicate, but really making sure that we are engaging even the students in their own process of improvement and inclusion and making sure we're meeting their individual needs. I am, you know, very conscious and aware of the emotional, social development and spiritual development of our students. And it is important for us to, you know, really be creative and think out of the box around, you know, how do we reach them? How do we, you know, impact them to inspire them to, you know, want to do something, you know, great? How do we, you know, not create limitations for them, but, you know, engage them with the greater population in a way that they can have social interactions with people who aren't necessarily like them? Like really, you know, engaging the diversity of our community so that our students in the general population and the students who are quote unquote "special needs" or differently abled will be able to engage together and interact in a way that benefits both groups. I think it is also important for us to continue to evolve our policies and be open to making changes as we need to, even whether it's individual related or school related or district related, but making sure that we are addressing the needs of our special needs population. And I'm committed to making sure that their voices are heard and that they are represented and that we can work with our parents and community to engage those students and making sure they're successful.
Okay, thank you, Dr. Johnson. All right, the next question is also a three-minute question, and we'll start with you, Dr. Johnson. Many school resource officers carry two guns and a taser. Do you believe it is appropriate to tase students? And what kind of special training should be required when SROs are hired to transition them from traditional police work to work with children?
I am a proponent of ending the School to Prison Pipeline. And I do not support guns and tasers in the school. I do not support physical interaction with students. I believe that there's opportunities for disciplinary policies to be revised. And I think instead of student SROs, we should have more counselors in the schools, engaging with the students and teaching them about, you know, behavioral management techniques. I think maybe we should have some yoga and meditation in the classrooms to help with, you know, students who may have anger management issues or, you know, we should engage in other creative ways instead of having police officers or student resource officers in the schools with tasers. I think we also have information nationwide that it disproportionately impacts Black and Brown students. Black and Brown students are the ones who are constantly targeted by these SROs, in particular, even the ones that look like them, right? But they're constantly targeted. And I really believe that it's something that we can do better with using them in a different way, in a more positive and constructive way where they're doing more community work or mentoring versus tasing and engaging in physical interactions with the students. I don't support that.
Okay. Thank you. And Ms. Radloff, same question. Do you need me to repeat it?
I think that SROs are very important. If you look across America and the challenges that education, schools, we have faced with violence that has come on our campuses. When I look at our SROs, I'm pretty impressed with them. They interact with the kids, eat lunch with the kids, they read to the kids. They talk about the policeman being a good job. I don't support violence in any way, shape, or form. And I think that the Gwinnett Stop program that is looking for youngsters who get in trouble in school, School to Prison, as they refer to it, is something to really be worked on. I think that a lot of it has to come about from the community at large. It has to come with the families. It has to come as the social workers, the counselors. The district has hired more psychologists this year. And we're seeing more and more issues related to mental issues and bringing in these folks who can speak with the kids, sit down with the kids, have lunch with the kids, and talk about the good things and what their goal and their life could be if they stay in school, if they follow the rules, very reasonable rules, and graduate from high school.
Okay, thank you. This next question is a one-minute question, but it's a long question. Okay. Restorative justice educational experts believe that one way to achieve better outcomes for students and reduce children finding their way into the court system is to have greater and more meaningful community involvement per their recommendations. Would you support the establishment of an ongoing committee that includes parents, students, community members, juvenile court officials, and mental health professionals devoted to eliminating disparities in discipline and achievement? If yes, at what point during the next term would you commit to establish such a committee? Ms. Radloff?
That sounds almost like a program, Project Rescue, that I pretty much tried to get going several years ago, and it has not been that successful. I absolutely support people coming together at very early ages or ages when kids are identified, having challenges, whether they're mental or social, community, parent, whatever the issue happens to be. I think the more that we can get together, the more that we can sit down and identify the issue and get the child on the right track, I think is better for all of us and that child will be successful. Nobody wants to see a child get suspended or have problems in school. Our kids are the next generation. They are the next leaders of this county. And we have a responsibility to educate them, to interact with them, and to set a foundation that they will be successful.
Thank you, Ms. Radloff. Okay, Dr. Johnson, same question to you.
Can you repeat the question? It was long.
Absolutely, sure. Hold on a second. Okay. Restorative justice educational experts believe that one way to achieve better outcomes for students and reduce children finding their way into the court systems is to have greater and more meaningful community involvement. Per their recommendations, would you support the establishment of an ongoing committee that includes parents, students, community members, juvenile court officials, and mental health professionals devoted to eliminating disparities in discipline and achievement? And if yes, at what point during the next term would you commit to establish such a committee?
Thank you for repeating that. It was long. I want to make sure I address it. I want to say, yes, I want to say definitely I support the engagement of a committee who, a committee that addresses these issues. In particular, a committee that includes the voices of our constituents, including our students. I think students' voices are important. I think we also need to include our activists who are, you know, on the ground, grassroots, you know, people who are, you know, really working with families, engaging in change. And so I think it should be a little bit more inclusive with, of course, you know, DAs and our teachers or parents and students and activists and advocates. You know, when we talk about ending the School to Prison Pipeline, we have to know that the root of that is systemic racism. So it's important for us to address dismantling systemic racism. And part of that is, a major part of it is through the educational system. And when we as educators and as leaders in Gwinnett County and any school district across America, when we understand the impact and the power we have to make this change in the educational system and we understand that, you know... and we understand that, you know, that when we make these investments in time, energy and effort and money in, in changing the systems that disproportionately impact black and brown people and that funnel them through this system that is a, a system that is, that is inequitable, a system that pushes them to prison. And then that continues the generational impact of, of inequality and inequity. We have to decide on, on strategies to dismantle that. And having a committee is step number one. But I, but I think we can go beyond that with, with, with working with our community organizations who are, who are, who are working with ending the school to prison pipeline and working with criminal justice reform.
Johnson, that's time. Okay. The final question that we have that's prepared for you this evening. And we'll start with you, Dr. Johnson. According to Open Georgia, Superintendent Will Banks' total compensation as of 2019 is in excess of $600,000 per year, making him one of the highest paid superintendents in the country. Given that the average teacher's salary is between $45,000 and $75,000 per year, and the median income for Gwinnett County is $60,000 per year, is there a point at which the board should set a cap on salary and benefits for the superintendent? And where would you draw that line? And that's, you have one minute to answer.
Absolutely. That's too much money. That money should be invested in other things. It can be reallocated to school systems and improving different programs we have in our school, other administrators in the school system. And, and, and teachers need to have, get paid more money. Teachers need more, more resources in their classrooms. So I absolutely believe that that is too much money. The second thing I think is that there is an opportunity for us to look at our budget and figure out a way that every school has what they need to equitably thrive. So we have schools in, in, based on where they, where they are and their zip code. They're better resourced. But, but I think we have an opportunity in Gwinnett County to, to, to ensure that, you know, our superintendents and our other people who are getting paid these high salaries, that, 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 that those funds could be sort of distributed in, in a ways that can, can help other underperforming schools like
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
like Berkmore High School.
Okay. Ms. Radloff, same question.
There's no question that, that the superintendent receives a significant salary. And as you indicated and pointed, one of the highest. But he's also the largest school district in the state of Georgia. We've looked at salaries from the university level. We've looked at comparable salaries. We've looked at the budget. We've looked at a number of things. And I think you have to pay that kind of a salary to attract the most, the quality of individual that we have here in Gwinnett County. As you're well aware, the system has, well, the superintendent has been here since 96. He has, as I say, a budget over a billion dollars. He has over 180,000 students and somewhere near 20,000 in terms of employees. As far as the teachers, absolutely. I support the teachers and especially in the title schools. Once you complete a certain number of years, such as three years, he, I'd like to see a stipend. I'd like to see a stipend in the title schools, that more money for them, absolutely. But as far as the teachers, as far as the superintendent's salary, it would be very difficult looking at comparable districts to offer a lower, lower income without the benefits to get the highest paid and highest qualified superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. Radloff. So that's the rest of the questions that we have prepared this evening. Marlin, do we have some questions from the chat room?
I'm sorry, yes, we do. We have quite a few questions. Give me just a sec. We did not discuss in advance of how long, and some of these are kind of detailed. So I'm gonna go through the best I can. Minute and a half?
Okay.
We'll say.
Let me set the timer so I can do 30 seconds.
Yes, please.
Yep, alright.
So the, I, I believe this was addressed earlier, but just so that the person hears it again. In the, in, in the interest of transparency and community engagement, would both candidates commit to ensuring that all future school board meetings are streamed online in their entirety and archived so that those who cannot attend in person can participate as an informed and, and engaged citizen? And I believe Dr. Johnson went first, so Mrs. Radloff, if you could pick.
Well, I'm, I'm fine to answer that. No, absolutely, I don't have any problem. In fact, I'm a firm believer that the more the community is involved, the better the school system is. So I do support any and all involvement of the citizens of this county.
Dr. Johnson?
I embrace technology. I think it should be streamed. I think it should be shared online and any other mediums. I think we should engage our students. We should do snapshot, Snapchat, is that it? Snapchat, TikTok, Facebook, Instagram. But we should definitely ensure that our community, and even in different languages, that we in some kind of way figure out a, a way to engage our community to ensure that they have the information they need and they know what's going on. And we know we have a diverse community. Everyone does not speak English. So we need to make sure that when we do do that, that there's some kind of way that we invest in. Financially, we can reallocate some of the funds from the superintendent and move those funds to investing in making sure that we have the language translation for the meetings. That's the only caveat I would say is that that needs to happen. But absolutely, I embrace technology. I think we should have online meetings. They should be live streamed and they should be recorded and shared.
And next question. Gwinnett County Public Schools has grown the administration rank for nine straight years. This has resulted in larger classroom sizes and come at the expense of classroom teachers, counselors, social workers, et cetera. Do you think this has contributed to disparate discipline outcomes for children of color? And we'll start with Dr. Johnson.
Absolutely, I do believe that. I believe it's important for us to in, 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 invest in our children and to understand and to recognize. The first thing we have to do is recognize that there's a disproportionate impact to black and brown students. We have to recognize our discipline policies. And when our discipline policies disproportionately have data that shows most of the kids, black and brown kids, are, are being punished more harshly than kids who are non-black, we have to address that. And so I think the first thing is for us to really analyze the data and understand, here are the numbers, these are the facts. Okay? We have that. The next thing is to understand, you know, why is this happening? And, 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 and address the systemic, you know, issues that are in our school systems. We know we have racist issues at some of our schools. We have racist teachers, we have racist, you know, you know, administration. We have to deal with that. We have to continuously train our teachers on, on biases that are unconscious, because many of us, all of us have biases. But the unconscious biases impact black and brown students because we are not addressing those things that people are not aware of. They are nice teachers, nice people who have their heart in the right place. But because of their biases, our black and brown students are disproportionately impacted with disciplinary policies that put them through the prison pipeline. So I, I think we have opportunities to address training and education around unconscious biases and ensuring we reevaluate our disciplinary policies and, and looking at the facts.
Thank you. The next question.
Do you want me to answer that question?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, please.
Yes, please.
Ms. Radloff, I am so sorry.
No, 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 it's, it's fine. It's absolutely fine. I am very aware of a, a now retired employee who worked in the discipline area for many, many years. I saw him once a month and never did I ever hear that issue surface. After he retired, and you know who we're talking about, very fine gentleman. After he retired, he began to address some letters that made those accusations. And thankfully enough, people like you here, Ms. Tillman, and Dr. Taylor and others have gotten together as a committee. And you are meeting to identify if and when these policies exist, if and when they are happening. Are they happening at the local school? Is it a policy-related issue? Is it at the system level? Is it at the panel level? I think that the fact that you are meeting, I am anxiously waiting for you to bring those recommendations because I'd like to see for myself exactly what is happening in that area and why. So I thank you for your involvement in the committee as a whole.
Thank you, Mrs. Radloff. I'm happy to do it as you know. The next question, we're gonna start with Mrs. Radloff. As an educator within a highly volatile Title I school, the expectations are extreme with very little or no support from leadership or administrators. A perverse environment, the effect of the perverse environment is poor. Our morale is exhausted. Every time we arrive to a place, that paper is rationed out as a commodity or gift. The focus of leadership is on relationships with adults and not supporting the children. We are expected to police the children rather than educate the children. What are your plans to return the focus to children-centered learning and not synchrophonic relationships with the principals?
Well, first of all, I think that it should all be the teacher relationship, the student relationship, the parent relationship. That's where the main focus needs to be. As far as, you're talking pretty much about the title schools, which are the majority of the schools in my district. And I am super aware of the stresses that the teachers go through in trying to communicate and teach the lessons to the children and involve the parents. It is something I speak about frequently, about the need or extra support. And you know, they're title schools, they do draw down additional dollars, but it's still not enough when you consider the stresses and the opportunities and challenges that go on every single day in a title school. So I am very supportive of some kind of a stipend. And I, I wish that we could get that taken care of in the next budget year. I'm very supportive of that. Of course, with the 14% cut, we don't know the exact impact it's going to have on us right now. But I am totally supportive of additional help for the title schools.
Dr. Johnson?
Johnson, yes. I, I, I am also supportive of investing in, in our classrooms, investing in our teachers and investing in our students. I think our teachers need, need more support. And I think it's critically important for us to listen to our teachers to make sure that we understand their needs and we can engage with them in a way that they have resources to meet the needs of their classroom. I think class sizes is an issue we have to address. I think we have to address the class, the, the environment of the school. So there, there are various things that we have an opportunity to, to address and, and, and consider investing in improving the quality of education for our students, improving our school environment, improving a reallocation of resources so that everyone can, all schools can equitably have what they need to meet, to, to meet the needs of the students.
Thank you. So this is kind of a two-part. So we're gonna start with you, Dr. Johnson. Do you think that the vague language currently in the Gwinnett County Student Code of Conduct that disciplines students for things such as annoying, alarming, et cetera, as well as the category other should be removed is part one? And then part two, do you think teachers should be required to go through culturally relevant trainings such as implicit bias stereotyping, et cetera, to develop healthy relationships with all students?
Great questions. I think to, to answer your first question, absolutely. I do believe that that language needs to be removed from, from anything we have published. We need to be very conscious of our words because they matter. And we have students, we have parents, and we have, you know, people outside of our district reading this language. And it's absolutely inappropriate and irresponsible for us in 2020 to have that type of language. That's the first thing. The second thing I would say is, you know, regarding training, our teachers are overwhelmed and under-supported. And I believe that we have an opportunity to support them. But we must absolutely have an investment in making sure that we deal with implicit biases in our classrooms. Because when we have data that disproportionately impacts black and brown students in our school system, when we have information that, that, you know, racist teachers come out, you know, making comments and saying things, and, and, and we have these issues in our schools, we have to address them. So teachers should absolutely be required, but on an ongoing basis, not just once a year, but it should be ongoing training in different formats. It should be, you know, online, it could be in person, but just various formats of training. And as a diversity, inclusion and equity expert, I would say that I absolutely am a 100% supporter for engaging in implicit bias training. It's critical to the prison pipeline.
We have timer, Marlin, for probably two more questions?
Oh, okay. So let me scan through very quickly. So I'm gonna skip over to, give me just one second, I'm sorry. At one time, parapros were in the classroom to assist the teachers. Seems that, oh, wait, back up. Oh, nevermind. At one time, parapros were in the classroom to assist the teacher. Seems that SROs have been the answers. Teachers not, and the answer hasn't been teachers helping teachers. How do you feel about bringing parapros back into the classroom?
Who's that question for?
Both of you.
Oh, okay, I don't mind answering it. Parapros play a major role. And I think of the kindergarten and, of course, I, I'm a big supporter of a mandated kindergarten. But we got a 1 to 18 ratio with a parapro in kindergarten. I think especially in the areas of the title schools and in the areas of special ed, not only are parapros needed, but also in some cases, people with some kind of medical training for special needs children. So yes, I am a big supporter of parapros and teacher relationships to the children. And it's just, it's just a positive thing to have.
Dr. Johnson?
I also agree. I think parapros are critically important. And it's in particular when we have these large class sizes, regardless of grade level, in my opinion. I think when we have a class size, you know, over, you know, 20 students, there's an opportunity for us to figure out a way where we have a, a better ratio. But I would actually like to, for, for Ms. Radloff to answer, you know, the question previously asked about, you know, the bias, the, the anti-bias training. If you could, I don't, I think we skipped you on that one.
Yeah, you knew, and I was
I know, I'm sorry, I was like, oh, she didn't answer it. So I'm, I was just like, you know, I don't know if, if you wanted to have an opportunity to answer that question, Ms. Radloff, but I just wanted to like, make sure you, you had that opportunity.
Yes, so I can repeat question too.
Please do, please do.
For sure. And do you think the vague language currently in the Gwinnett County Student Code of Conduct that disciplines students for things such as annoying, alarming, et cetera, as well as the category other should be removed, was part one? And then part two was, do you think that teachers should be required to go through culturally relevant training such as implicit bias to develop healthy relationships with all students?
I'll answer the second part first. I think the teacher training and the understanding of our students, where they come from, the home life and, but I also have to remember that we're about teaching and learning. So as, as many as community issues that are out there, I want our teachers to relate to our children. I want them to share, I want them to I want them to develop relationships with our children, because if a child is motivated, if they have a good relationship with the with the teacher, then that child's going to learn and that child's going to want to be in school. So whatever necessary training is needed, I think it should be identified and offered to the teachers. And as far as the, would you repeat the first part of that question?
Sure. Sure. I'm gonna scroll down to give me just a sec. Do you think that the vague language currently in the Student Code of Conduct for things such as annoying, alarming, et cetera, as well as the category other should be removed?
Well, I haven't looked at it in quite a while. I hear what you're saying, and those are challenging word. What I would like to do is the committee that's put together that, you know, Dr. Taylor and you were on, I would like you to make that recommendation and to see whether or not the group that you were working with feel that that language is inappropriate. If it's inappropriate, then we need to address it.
Thank you. And one that's directed at Mrs. Radloff. And I have one about, I know Mrs. Radloff has heard a lot about, which is the performance pay. That's been an ongoing issue at a school board meeting. Mrs. Radloff, you run a nonprofit in a Gwinnett school tutoring students. Do you receive any grant funding, remuneration, or any in-kind services from Gwinnett schools to do so?
I don't personally receive it, no. We do write grants to Prime America and, you know, the foundations like that. The, I do not receive anything from Gwinnett County, no, ma'am.
Then for both of you, for the performance, the performance pay, and this will be our final question, what I can commit to doing is copying all these questions out and making sure that you all get them. And if you have the opportunity to address the ones that we didn't get to, I'm sure we can send them out. The performance pay is very unpopular among teachers and school administrators, as was reported by the AJC. The awards went disproportionately to the non-Title I schools. Do you believe that the district should reconsider the performance pay system and possibly reconsider focusing so much attention on standardized test scores?
On the pay for performance, when it initially surfaced, I had some concerns about it and I expressed it. This year, the pay for performance is not going to occur for a number of reasons. Do I think it needs to be addressed and readdressed? Yes, I do. I do think that very strongly about that, because I hear more this year from the pay for performance from last year than I've ever heard, and it's not felt very positive about our overall teachers.
I think I think performance pay creates incentives that we don't necessarily need to have in our district. And I believe we should focus more on just engaging in the performance of our students, supporting our teachers, standardized testing. I also am not a big proponent of standardized testing. I think ensuring that our students are progressing at the level that they need to progress, doing assessments in our classrooms are critical to make sure that students are meeting learning targets. But standardized testing, until there is equity in the way the standardized testing questions are created, until the process is improved, I won't support that in a greater sense. But I do support assessments and evaluating our students, our students to make sure they meet our learning standards.
I need to respond to that also. I like the teacher-developed assessment. The teacher knows the kids, the teacher's teaching, the teacher knows what's going on. There are state standards and there are assessments which are required. But again, I think that the testing, you have to know where they're, where they are and where they're going and what the church child knows and doesn't know. So I think that there are opportunities for teacher-driven testing, and I think a lot of that should be left to the teacher and to her class.
But the issue is, is that when we have the non-Title I schools getting those performance in.
Oh, I'm not talking about pay for performance. I'm talking about just assessment and testing. I hear you on the pay for performance. We, it has been a problem. It has been a problem, and I have spoken to it on more than one occasion.
And there's inequities all throughout our system, and that's one of the inequities that we need to address and change.
Okay, ladies, you have now two minutes to give us your closing remarks. So I guess we'll go ahead and start with you, Dr. Johnson.
Okay, thank you so much for the opportunity to present to the people who are here listening. And thank you so much for Gwinnett Stop and the League for hosting this forum. So, you know, my platform is fundamentally on making sure that we improve equity in our schools and making sure that our students and our teachers are engaged, our parents are also listened to and can participate in the process of improving our schools. I want to ensure that regardless of where people live, regardless of their zip code, that they have what they need. We have a school that, Gwinnett Science Math Technologies, an exceptional school in our district. Why aren't the other schools performing like that school? Why aren't the other schools resourced like that school? I want to ensure that even the process of getting students in that school is an equitable process. I think that there are opportunities for us to improve, you know, how people are funneled in that school and the requirements there. And there are also opportunities to figure out, well, let's look at that school and let's understand why is that school one of the number one schools in the nation and the other schools in the same district are not even closely meeting the standards? Someone asked in this forum, why my kids don't go to Gwinnett County Public Schools? Now, the parents here who are listening to this video and on this stream, we all want the best for our children, right? We want to make sure that our children receive the best education possible. We have people in Gwinnett County who are living with uncles and uncles. We have people who are living with grandmas. We have people who are moving to hotel rooms just so that their children could live in a better zip code to get the best education. And you think my zip code, where I live, is I love my community, invested in my community, but I want to make sure that the schools in my community are funded and well-resourced and that they are meeting the standards. When we have schools in this community that are below-average schools, I believe that the parents should be able to, you know, want the best for their children, but we need to, as school administrators, figure out a way to to make sure that regardless of where people live, that they can send their school, their children to the local schools where they live.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson.
And right, parents can do that.
Ms. Radloff?
Well, you mentioned GMST. GMST draws students from all across. It's almost like a lottery school. It is the number one school and no question about it. And if you look at the student population that attends that school, you will find in many cases that they're very motivated by their parents. Now, I would like to see all parents be the same way motivated to meet the needs of their child. We do have some community issues and challenges. There's no question about that. I spend hours, hours, working with parents, ELL on Sunday, teaching them how to help their children. I'm involved with the schools and opportunities for mental health and public health. I spend a great deal of time because I want the title schools to be successful. I want every child to be on grade level in the third grade, to start school not two years behind, and I want to see them graduate. Every child is important. There's no question about that. I believe in the students and the and the community that I serve. And I thank you, the League of Women Voters, and I thank Gwinnett Stop, that you provide a very good service, and thank you very much.
Thank you both for being willing to speak with us tonight and for your willingness to serve. We are happy to have you participate in this forum this evening and look forward to seeing what happens with the election. And here's our information if you want to get in touch with us. And thank you, guys, and good night.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you.
Absolutely.